I'd like to call the order, the committee of the whole meeting on Monday, October 19th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Gaffino?
Here.
Trustee Gaitley?
Here.
Trustee Bowery?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Burman?
Here. Our, uh, no audience comments? Trustee comments? Well, first item of discussion is Mr. Tote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Petition 20-06 speaks to the Orchard Commons PUD for a special use for plan unit development with site plan approval with deviations to the PUD itself. This might look somewhat familiar. It's hard to see in this screen right now just because of the presentation, but the lot four, which is the upper right-hand lot shown within that picture, is Hardware Restaurant. And if you go back to this, there you go, thank you. It's hard to see in that picture, but the bottom of the screen there is the lot three, which we're showing the immediate development of a restaurant with deviations to the setback, primarily the southeast corner of the building, below a notch of the building, and also a patio with to be in the setback, the 35-foot setback, also two for the patio to be an amusement. The zoning for the petition also covers a lot eight, which you guys will probably know as the hot farm, which is shown on the upper left there. It's not part of the immediate approval, but the zoning would be approved as part of this PUD amendment. One of the conditions of approval would be to bring the site plan back for a lot eight for the micro brewery. One's plans have been submitted with elevation landscaping, et cetera. So the PUD amendment, what this covers tonight is the allowance for the restaurant on lot three. If you recall, the micro brewery was actually approved on that lot in 2015. The deviations for the setback to the southeast corner of the building, the allow, the allowance to have a roof sign on top of the building, which is shown to be on the eastern building facade, on top of the eastern building facade, and a projecting sign which should be located near the, which would be the northwest corner of the building itself. This was before the Plan Commission, October 6th. They did recommend approval unanimously. They did add one condition, that the, through the PUD amendment, that cross-access be granted to both properties in the event that the properties are subdivided and sold. The other two conditions being, one I had mentioned, which is a safe plan for a lot eight for the micro brewery, and then that the roof sign not blink or animate with regard to the lights on the sign. I believe Parker Grabowski is in attendance, and if he wants to speak to the project itself to give the board an update on the project of the restaurant.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Um, just a little bit about this restaurant. Kind of what I've told the planning committee also was, this, it's called Fortunato Fish and Oyster. It's a northern Italian restaurant with heavy seafood. All the pasta's made fresh. You can actually watch the people make pasta through a glass like cube. The bar is going to contain a seafood counter where you can see what we have for seafood, and we, all the cold seafood will be prepared like right out at the bar area. The whole building is kind of designed after Frank Lloyd Wright's Falling Waters Building. If you ever go look at that building or seen it, there's a lot of cement projectiles that come out of it, and that's kind of what we're doing over our patio area and over the entrance to the deli area and over the, uh, the speakeasy room or secret dining room in the back. That, that back corner where that patio protrudes out on the building, that's, that's a private dining room for 12 that's hidden from the restaurant. It has its own entrance from, from the kitchen. It has a secret entrance from the restaurant to get into it. And then you kind of have your own patio out there, and it's like a private dining experience. There's a lot of glass in the building, and it also is done like Falling Waters. It's done in like rectangular shapes on top of each other and all through the top of the building. So there'll be natural light you can see at the top of the building coming in through the whole building at the top, and then natural light coming to the patio, that's solid glass. And then the little squares you see on the corners and everything, that's kind of what Frank Lloyd Wright did to all throughout that building, and we're going to bring that from the outside to the inside. Everything's going to be framed out in small cypress trees around the patios and around the private patio also. The restaurant's only going to be open from 3:30 till about 11 or 12 at night. Seventy percent of the restaurant is geared towards 21 and over. Thirty percent is geared towards families. The patios are broken up that way also. The outside facade is basically done in chiplap, like white chiplap boards that are going to be three, three different thicknesses and kind of give the building some texture. The brickwork will all be white, and a lot of the projectiles that you're seeing come out of the front, the cement will all be nat, that's all going to be natural. The frames on the windows are going to be anodized aluminum, just, just raw aluminum. So inside the restaurant too, there'll be a fire or water feature on the family side that'll kind of run down the whole middle of the restaurant and, and kind of warm up the restaurant or kind of feature the fact that we're about the ocean and everything that comes out of it. We're, we're going to be carrying a lot of things that no one has around in this area, and that's kind of why this sport, this restaurant came to the fruition of me and my partners is with a lot of the foods we like to eat, we can't get around here. Maybe Oakbrook has a couple places that can do some of the things we're going to do, and the rest is downtown. So the fare we're going to offer at this restaurant is really going to be different, and a lot of the things we're going to be bringing in aren't even offered in the city, a couple of them. So it'll also feature Neapolitan-style pizza. We're bringing in a pizza oven that cooks at 900 degrees and makes the pizzas in like two minutes, and we'll have 20, about 20 different styles of pizza that will sell out of the deli area along with a meatball sandwich, a lobster roll, and our entire menu will come out of there. We'll also feature in that, like a little store in there that's going to kind of have cheeses and meats from Hardware and sauces from Turf Room and a lot of the things that people ask to buy all the time at our restaurants, we're going to feature in that store area, that deli portion of the restaurant. Any questions or what we're doing about the signage? The signage is modeled after like 1930s, 1940s signs that you'd see like on the top of a hotel in downtown Chicago or coming out of a street, like an old brown still building, those hanging signs. The signs you're seeing aren't really a good representation of what ours are going to look like. We're going to have these built and take them to an artist to have them aged and beat up so they look like they're from the 30s or 40s. And I just kind of gave you the ideas, but like the sign that's going to hang off the building is going to say, you know, air-conditioned, you know, things that are really, really out of touch with what's going on now, but brings you back to like what you saw maybe when you were a kid, you know? So one, it'll say Italian, it'll say, you know, but it's not going to say it the way this sign looks. It's going to look, I, I have an example, but unfortunately you don't have it, but it's going to look like it's something from, you know, the oldest place in, in downtown in the city or something. And it's going to be, it'll say things that'll make you feel like, what? Like, why would it say that? So it's going to kind of bring back older type signs that'll fit kind of with the, the way we're building this building. There's nothing, it's going to look completely different from anything else we've ever done. So, I mean, it, no one will know there's a common owner by looking at the buildings anyway. You guys have any questions about, you know, what's happening there, what, what we're doing? I also, just so you know, I told the planning committee also, like, I, I kind of walked out there all summer in the parking lot and counted spaces to see how many spaces would be available for another restaurant, if it would work or not for us. And I pretty much always had around 100 spaces open, even when we were like really packed at Hardware, and we were really busy this summer out there, especially because of patio and things like that. But I always had 100 spaces or more, and this restaurant actually seats less than Hardware, and Hardware's capacity never reached what we thought it was going to because of the stones that were placed inside. They kind of changed the whole development of the inside of that restaurant, couldn't move it. And so we lost about 30 seats in that restaurant, and this restaurant has about 30 seats less than Hardware. So we have, we're going to have a total of 200, and I think 26 spots out there for the two restaurants, and I feel pretty confident that we're not going to have a problem based upon the size of each restaurant and what we can hold. But anything else I can?
I think it's, good luck. I think it's awesome.
Oh, thank you.
Do you have any anticipated, like how long the construction will take?
Yeah, probably about five to six months. This is a pretty simplistic building besides the front entrance. We don't have a brewery going in here. We don't have a lot of strange architecture that we had along with Hardware, putting boulders in and, and using all recycled materials. This, this building's a little more straightforward. It will be a precast building like our other ones, so it'll go up quick. And, but there's a lot less things to slow us down with this building. It's pretty straightforward, easy to build.
Yeah, I think it'll be a great addition to our community. Parker?
Thanks, thank you.
You know, Parker, as far as parking goes, no one is going to be more observant of that than you are. And we know from past experience that you're going to do everything you can to solve any problem that you have. So we look forward to you, your third adventure in North Aurora, and Fortunato looks great to me.
Thanks.
To see it coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, I love the idea of a seafood restaurant around here. It's a nice addition. You were pretty dead on with your statement where there's not an awful lot of that to pick around here.
Yeah.
Looking forward.
Thanks.
Any other comments, any other discussion? Questions?
I did post the annexation amendment, which is required through publication, so we did schedule the final approvals for the November second meeting.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, item number two, Mike.
Thanks, good mayor. Item number two is the Moose Lake Estates Unit Three Annexation Amendment. I'll speak briefly to this. I don't want to sound redundant with their presentation, but MI Homes is the contract buyer for Moose Lake Estates. They're looking to purchase all of Unit Three and remaining lots within Unit, or Units One and Two. I'll go ahead and turn it over at this point, and I can fill in any gaps in the presentation afterwards, speaking to the third amendment to the annexation agreement. So go ahead and turn it over to MI Homes at this point.
Good evening. Hopefully everybody can hear me. I'm Vince Rosenova, on behalf of the petitioner, which is MI Homes. Also here with me and on the line this evening and available for any questions are Scott Baranbrugge and Mark McLaughlin, both of MI Homes. Mike, if you could shift to the next slide, please. By way of background, MI has been building homes now in the Chicagoland area for about 12 years, and in that time, they have already become a top-three home builder in our area. In Chicagoland, MI currently has 28 active communities in various local suburbs, including municipalities such as Warrenville, Geneva, and Naperville. With regard to the Moose Lake subdivision, is depicted on the next slide. If you could advance for us, Mike, thank you. It's our understanding that the original developer annexed and subdivided this property back in 2003 as a 250-home site community. Soon thereafter, the developer began construction, and prior to about 2010, 180 homes were built within Phase One and Phase Two of the subdivision. When the economy took a turn back in 2010, the developers ceased building operations, and with the consent of the village, they planted a subdivision for Phase Three that was vacated, and ultimately, the improvements in Phase Three were covered back up with dirt. For the past 10 years or so, the remaining lots have sat vacant and contributed nothing to the subdivision and nothing to the overall community. Additionally, it's our understanding that there are remaining outstanding public improvements which require completion in order to move forward with the subdivision. The next slide evidences and identifies the 32 lots remaining in Phase One and Phase Two, as well as the 36 lots remaining in Phase Three, which altogether total 68 home sites, which MI is currently under contract to purchase. Subject to village reapproval of the Phase Three plat of subdivision, which was approved 17 years ago in 2003, and approval of the annexation agreement amendment, MI intends to complete all remaining subdivision improvements, build homes on the vacant home sites, and complete the community. Assuming all goes according to plan, MI would like to close on the 68 lots by the end of the year and begin the improvements necessary to complete the subdivision in the spring of 2021. We believe that the long-awaited completion of the subdivision would have many positive impacts on the community and village, which would include attracting new residents to the village and increasing the village's real estate tax base and population base, enhancing the village's overall public health and safety through completion of the outstanding public improvements, including sidewalks and streetscape improvements. Also completing the 68 home sites will add additional homeowners to pay for the common area improvements and contribute towards assessments, which would then enhance the overall viability of the homeowners' association. And lastly, improving the overall condition of the subdivision will enhance the property values in the area, as it will no longer appear to be an incomplete subdivision. We thank you for your time and consideration this evening, and Mark, Scott, and I are available for any questions.
Yeah, we included a draft of the, what would be the third amendment to the annexation agreement. Again, Moose Lake is governed by an annexation agreement, which we require, basically what we're looking to do here today, as Vincent just mentioned, is to complete the subdivision. There are requirements and obligations under the annexation, and I know MI Homes has been looking to come in and just clarify some of the terms for that annexation, which there's a draft of included in the packet for tonight. Not, not a lot of glaring issues. As Vince mentioned, the, some of the public improvements are outstanding with a deadline as of the end of this year. They would be looking to extend that deadline additional four years. They'd be looking to do a permit fee lock for the next five years, I believe it was, and, which would not include consulting fees, which are subject to change from time to time. This is something that staff can get behind. It's, becomes a little challenging to monitor the various annexation agreements and PUDs in town. Having a fee lock is actually, makes it, not, not saying that easier is better in this case, but allows them to lock in and understand their financial obligations and allow staff clarity when we're assessing the building permit fees. And then the last is just clarifying some of the setbacks. The, the plat, final plat of subdivision for Unit Three does have setbacks, some of which include a minimum of a seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback, subject to a 20-foot separation between buildings, which would be on the plat itself. So just obligations, just looking to clarify within the annexation agreement and looking to get feedback from the Village Board.
I have a question about the side yard setback. Mike?
Yeah.
How's that change from what they have now over there? Is that the same, or is there something different with that?
No, the plat actually has setbacks on it. They're the, included in the annexation PUD ordinance from back in around 2003, it did mention through the plat exhibit, minimum side yard setback, about seven-and-a-half feet. But again, that 20-foot separation is required, so if one is seven-and-a-half feet, that requires a neighborhood, neighborhood property have 12 and a half feet.
Right. So that really isn't changed from previous?
No, we're just looking to solidify it with the third amendment.
Okay.
It, it, it wasn't stated in the original annexation agreement, but it was included in the plat, so we're making it explicit in the amendment what was already in the plat.
I got you. They don't have any idea that design I was kind of reading there, they don't know, is this stuff going to kind of blend in and match what's in there? Any idea of that?
So Vince Rosenova here, and our architecture and floor plans are being designed in-house, and they're well underway. We anticipate that the new, last 68 home sites, we're going to offer about nine new models, including a ranch option, because we think one of the keys to completing this subdivision is going to be to offer a variety of options to future homeowners, which are consistent with market trends, and we think that the nine different floor plans with multiple elevations will, you know, hit the mark there and create that excitement and interest to want to buy a house in, in Moose Lake. As we progress with the elevations, one of the things that Mike had mentioned to us is to meet with the homeowners' associations. We're going to have that meeting here in the next couple weeks and sit down and go through the elevations and the floor plans, once those evolve where we get to the point where we could have that meeting. But generally speaking, the elevations and floor plans are going to meet market trends, but in regard to the fact that a lot of these homes in here are now 17 years old, 15 years old, some of the consumer tastes have changed, so there's going to be a different look to some of our elevations, which we think will be well-received in the marketplace and overall complimentary to what's in Moose Lake right now.
Okay, thank you.
Does that mean that they'll be generally similar square footage?
So the square footage, we believe that we're going to, our square footages are generally going to be a little smaller than what you see out there today. I believe our square footages are going to start out, we think one of the, the major areas of interest is going to be ranch home offering. We think that that's very popular in the western suburbs, and we think that that's something that's not generally available in the market. So our ranch is going to start out at about 1,500 square feet, and then we're going to have two-story homes that range up to about 3,000 square feet, and go a little bit over 3,000 square feet with structural options like sunrooms and other features like that. So a little smaller, but very complimentary and offering homes consistent with what the consumer's looking for today.
Any other discussion, any other questions?
No, I think, I think it's, I think it'll be a good addition. I like the idea that we're going to be completing the project, so I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Sounds good. Anything else? I thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Appreciate it. Okay, item number three. Mike, Tiff District.
All right. I'm here. All right, the last item for tonight is a discussion regarding the village's tax increment financing districts. We're basically going to provide a little update as to where we're at, some of the Tiff accomplishments, and try to get some direction from the Village Board on how to proceed with some of the ideas that we've had over the past couple years. As you may know already, the village has three separate tax increment financing districts, the purple being the Route 31 Tiff District, which is Route 31 from Oak Street to Sullivan. We have the North Lincoln Way Tiff, which is the area shown in green, which is the, to the northeast of that, and we have the Sperry Tiff, which is comprised of Village Hall and the Sperry property to the north. Next slide, please. Little bit, little bit of reminder on Tiff, don't need to go too much into this, but the state statute grants us authority, and I think there are 40 other states that have this ability as well, to utilize Tiff increment financing, which is a tool that the village uses as redevelopment, to take areas of blight and, and basically pump life into them using some of the increment that's generated from the Tiff district itself. There's, there's a little area shown of the, the illustration shown to the right there, was basically the whole intent is to increase the EAV of the Tiff district to capture some of those increment funds to put back into the district for redevelopment purposes, which we'll discuss later. Also too, each Tiff, being a new Tiff, is set for a 23-year time period. The, it's intended to increase property values, which again generates Tiff, but at the end of the Tiff would have a higher EAV, which is better for everyone. And again, Tiff is not a Tiff, or excuse me, Tiff is not a tax. But go ahead and, next slide, please. This is just a sample tax bill. The increment itself is generated from the net taxable value minus the Tiff base, which is shown up on the right-hand corner there, times the effective tax rate. So in this case, the, the area shown in red is a property that is generating $21,000 of Tiff. Again, it's not additional taxes paid onto it, but that's the money that is taken from taking the original net present value, subtracting that original Tiff base, which was frozen when the Tiff was established, and all that increment is then multiplied by the tax rate for the increment amount itself, which goes to the village annually. Next slide, please. How are funds used? Again, I mentioned redevelopment, enhancing flooded areas, public infrastructure improvements, clean it up in polluted areas, infrastructural needs, downtown viability, rehabilitating historic properties. Couple examples the village utilizes in that regard is our Route 31 Tiff side grant program, which you're all familiar with. And recently, as far as historic properties, we did rehabilitate the silo using Tiff funds. This can actually use for a property acquisition as well, and more recently, we purchased 10 South Lincoln Way. We are currently entering into a contract for the purchase of 19 South Lincoln Way and 24 South Lincoln Way, which is the Moka property. Next slide, please. Some of the examples of how the village has used Tiff over the years. This is 24 South Lincoln Way. We use Tiff funds to acquire the property, which is the lap gas station shown in the upper left, used Tiff funds to extract the old underground storage tanks, used Tiff funds to demolish the old gas station, and ended up selling the property to the owner of Moka now. And also, we did some reimbursement for some of the infrastructure improvements that were put in for the property, if you recall. Next slide, please. This is a recent example of, well, semi-recent example of what was done south of 88. This is Smoke Tree Lane, just a little position for you. You have the storage lot there, movie theater, Comfort Inn and Suites, the North Aurora Hotel. Obviously, the pictures to the left demonstrate a very dilapidated road with a configuration that was not conducive to commerce in that area. So using Tiff funds, we improved the area and working with those property owners, we assumed the, the actual right-of-way itself through dedication and then actually used Tiff funds to perk curbing in new streets, resurfacing in the realignment of Smoke Tree. And I can tell you, it's a whole different area out there now. Going back to the Tiff facade grant program, to date, we have issued over, awarded over $300,000 in funds for 50% matching for the facade enhancement, storefront improvements. The picture there is the Hidden Beauty Salon of 110 John Street, the former post office building. I believe we used Tiff funds for painting and onings for that building. It's a nice attractive building now in the village. Also to the former Rainbow Tile Building at 12 John Street, which is now the sharing care facility, Tiff funds were awarded to them as well. There are numerous examples of how we've used that money to enhance properties along the Route 31 corridor there. If you recall, back in 2018, the Tiff guidelines were changed to include demolition of non-conforming structures and also structures to be a visual blight. Next slide, please. And some of the examples of demolitions that we've used since then, so only a couple years out, we demolished the property at 2 North Lincoln Way in 2018, so that, that structure's no longer there. That's the property right across from the community center site and the 7-Eleven property. Last year, Tiff funds were awarded for the eventual demolition of the 313 and 315 South Lincoln Way, so those gems are no longer in the village, and they are ripe for redevelopment, which is south of Eden's, south of 88 and the tollway there. Next slide, please. The Tiff itself, the, these are the three various Tiff districts broke out. The areas shown in red are not generating increment, and the areas in green are currently generating increment. So even though property is not generating, is below the actual Tiff base, doesn't mean it's taken away from the Tiff itself, that just means that it's not generating any Tiff. It's basically generating a zero in increment to the district. But as you can see on the bullet points there, that each district is actually currently generating Tiff funds. 31, we received $521,000 last year for Sperry, $7,400, North Lincoln Way, $33,000. So those are the funds that even, again, even though those properties are not generating positive increment, there are properties in town that are generating substantial amount of increment and do contribute to those overall amounts. And if the overall, obviously, when you have properties like this in the red, that just means that the performance is not as expected, and it was anticipated that these, most of these properties would be in the green and generating some sort of increment. Next slide, please. There have been a lot of challenges to the future of Tiff districts. Again, this one was established in two thousand, the main one being Route Thirty-One was established in two thousand and two, so if you had a twenty-three-year timeline to that, its next expiration would be two thousand and twenty-five. So we're still sitting about four or five years out from the expiration of the Route Thirty-One Tiff District. But there is legislation that's continually being introduced, none of it, which is really stuck at this point, but it is under constant scrutiny. So we wanna basically take this time to kind of reexamine where we're at and get some direction for the future, so we can take advantage of the Tiff as a redevelopment tool for the village, while we still have the ability to do so in a in a appreciable manner. Again, the impending Tiff expiration dates, adding twenty-three years to the dates that I had shown in the beginning. We have a decline in assessed property values, and not to say it's unpopular with all the tax bodies, that's just a general statement. Again, the the goal of the Tiff would be to increase the property value. So once the Tiff naturally expires, you actually have a higher tax rate for the individual taxing bodies. Next slide, please. We've spent the greater amount of the past year or two working with Tesco Associates, our Tiff consultant. We ran through quite a number of different scenarios. We looked into extending the current Tiff versus dissolving the Tiff and re-tiffing the certain areas, which I'll get to. Most had benefits to them. Obviously, the Tiff extension would add to ten-year or twelve-year extension to the current terms of the Tiff itself, meaning the current Tiff base values, et cetera. It does require the taxing bodies and let the state legislature to sign off on it. Looking at the new Tiff, it would be a new twenty-three-year time period from the adoption of the new Tiff District. The Tiff base values themselves would be reset, so there's a little give and take in that regard. Doesn't need taxing body approval, but we do meet regularly and have open communication with the various taxing bodies as to what we're doing, so that way they're supportive of those actions themselves. We can add new properties to that, which I'll get to in a moment. So basically, what it comes down to is we ran through a number of different scenarios. We spent a lot of time working on, you know, if we were to take out this property, add this property, you know, start starting the Tiff here, disconnect the Tiff here. But what I'm about to go through is, you know, years in the making as to what we feel the best direction for the village would be, considering what we've done to date with properties in the Tiff districts and sort of the direction we want to go with the future of the Tiff. Next slide, please. So the goal would be to create a unified Tiff District, and if you remember from the 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 second slide, there are three Tiff districts. The goal would be, to some extent, to combine all those Tiff districts and create one unified Tiff. There is benefits to that. Obviously, there's funding coming in from properties and all the different tips that can be shared amongst the entire Tiff area itself. And looking in the future, there are properties that we do want to add to the Tiff District. The Yucca Beverage Property, which is a value, and working at some of the existing Tiff properties to make them contiguous, to take advantage of some of the access. Looking at Block One, which is currently not in the Tiff District, which includes the Community Center property, looking to do that to have change, achieve some of the goals that we set forth in discussions regarding Block One through the comp plan and discussions with our consultants on that property. The the properties across the street from Village Hall, the Napa, past and present shops and dance moves, getting those properties in would allow us to allow them to be part of the Tiff facade grant program. That I have spoken with those business owners in the past who would like to take advantage of some of the Tiff facade enhancement programs available. And some of the areas that are Route Thirty-One and Fifty-Six, the Belson Property, Nineteen South Lincoln Way, Runaway, the Shell Property, and adding them in to, again, take advantage of some of the Tiff facade programs and redevelopment opportunities in that area as well, allowing it to expand a little bit to the east. There's the property, if you go to the next slide, please. The property south of eighty-eight, if you see here on the illustration to the left in purple, the plan would be to disconnect the properties to the south and let that portion of the Route Thirty-One Tiff expire naturally, which would expire around two thousand and twenty-five. So all the funds that are currently in Route Thirty-One Tiff would remain in that Tiff for the remainder of its life. And then we would establish a new Tiff District, the Unified Tiff, which is shown to the right there. And the the properties that are being added, as I had mentioned before, are the properties shown in yellow. Again, really trying to capture the Tiff itself and and how we can benefit those areas for redevelopment. We've kind of worked on the auspice that Tiff might not be available when we're looking to redo this naturally the next several years, so we want to take advantage of while we still have the opportunity to, and it might not be around when, you know, in twenty-three years for redoing this naturally. So again, the goal would be to disconnect, and then after twenty-five, after the twenty twenty-five, that those properties shown in purple would go back on the tax roll, and then the, it would just generate normal property taxes to the taxing bodies as a normal circumstance. And all the properties that would be shown in the United Tiff would then be part of that Tiff facade grant program and be able to take advantage of all the Tiff programs and incentives available for redevelopment, because, you know, looking at it, we've done a lot of work through acquisition, through facade grant programs, working with the various properties, redevelopment, but there's still a lot of work to do. So we want to take advantage of this Tiff as a tool. Next slide, please. We did do a lot of homework already. Again, we've worked, we've ran through various scenarios. TESCA has run through an eligibility report, which basically just kind of outlines whether or not we can, it stands the mustard as a Tiff. So they did take a look at our United Tiff example, and long story short, it does qualify under a conservation area in TESCA's opinion, based upon the six criteria shown there. So we would be moving forward that, which I believe is part of the actual requirement for establishing the Tiff itself. So we've done a lot of the homework upfront. Next slide, please. And again, the the timeline to establish the Tiff, there are, we sort of outlined it here briefly, but we're probably looking at a four- to six-month period. Obviously, everything's been a little more complicated these days through COVID and just with everything going on, but we would try to do the best we could to facilitate a lot of meetings with the village board and the actual Tiff group themselves, the JRB, which consists of the taxing body representatives. But again, we would have to go through a quite substantial process and looking to maybe commence that during the winter months. Next slide, please. And that kind of concludes basically the general, you know, thirty-thousand-foot perspective of what I wanted to talk about tonight. We're just going to get any questions regarding Tiff, or, you know, just good general sense from the board's support as to where we're at right now. Give us some direction to move forward with. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I like the idea of dense in the Tiff District, the one, I think that'll work out well for our community.
It looks like you've done a very thorough job thinking of the Tiff that we've put together in the past, going on in the, in the past.
Yeah, this project, Dale, has been very collaborative with administration, finance with TESCA. This is very much a group effort, you know, through the course of a lot of different meetings and just different scenarios.
I think it it shows a great potential for us. And I think it shows us the way we can capture revenue to expand the way we'd like to see us expand in that area. So I think it's commendable, the work that you've done. I think that it has been a long, a long process, I know that. I think we were all looking for answers long ago, but I think that you've come up with a great plan. It looks very feasible, it looks very practical. I think it's great.
No, thank you.
Other comments?
I could just say one thing real quickly. Basically, during this process, we also want to give Mike and Bill a lot of credit for their input. We looked at a way that we thought normally would be better for the the future and capturing growth in the future to redevelop an area that we've already had some momentum on. But we've also been practical about it by making sure that we weren't overreaching and that the taxing bodies that have waited for that increment will have an opportunity to get some of that back early on in areas that we've already completed work. So it was a really, it was a really good effort and all around by everybody.
Well, yeah, I think it shows a great deal of everyone when we're saying we're not going to extend, we're going to allow those, you know, twenty-three years to go over, and and there will be tax increments that the taxing bodies are gonna receive, and I'm sure they're very happy to hear that also. Anything else? Good job.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anything else to come before us this evening? Entertained the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Good night.
Good night, everyone.